Okay. Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM Board of Trustees Work Session for June 22nd, 2020. We are still working through Zoom in a time of COVID. I need a motion to open this meeting.
No move.
Second.
Ken Nor, Owen Farah.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. The first item on the agenda tonight is Comprehensive Plan Update. And NV5, this is the company we used to do Comprehensive Plan, is going to give us an update. And Mr. Neil Desai, Neil, you want?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, hey Neil, how are you doing, buddy? I didn't see you there.
Yeah, good, nice to see everybody after so long.
So you want to walk us through what we all, my friend?
Sure, sure, I think in the memo I sent, I tried to put as much information on there so that, you know, we could spend time here with any questions and kind of look at the timeline. So if you have the memo I sent, if you'd have that in front of you, I think that'd be better than trying to project.
You're talking about the June 12th?
June, it's dated June 18th.
I only have the June 12th, I don't have the, I didn't get the 18th.
It's in the backup.
Yeah, it's after the June 12th one. Go down one more. I have June 12th and then I have the June 18th after that.
The 18th is not in the packet that I got.
Do you have your laptop with you, Dan?
I'm on a laptop, but if I go, I can't.
You don't want to get off, so you, yeah, I understand that. I'm gonna send it to you.
I guess I'll start just, while Dan is receiving that over email, I think just a brief bit of review, recap, the latest public draft of the comp plan update is still posted on the website, planvion.org. That was, we called it the first full draft, October 4th, 2019. And that was up for public comment. And the, after that, the next event was, we had a Comprehensive Update Summit on 24th of October, 2019. That was televised by LMC and I put a link to the video if anybody was interested in looking back at that. And so during, so it's been, you know, during this, since, since the end of October, when we had the summit, we compiled all the comments received at the summit from the BOT, Village Planner, and we put those all together in a tracking sheet. And the purpose of that is to record all the comments and provide a response to all of them. Some of the comments were minor things and so we noted them. And some of them were minor corrections, good things that people found. And some things were a little bit more substantive that we commented on the sheet. And you, and the tracking sheet will be part of the full record of the comp plan. And it's not part of this memo here, but it's, it's gonna, the importance of it is just to reflect back on how the draft has changed as a result of the comments and record specifically how we responded to the comments, if that led to any changes in the draft. And so that's part of the, will be part of the record and we'll keep on working on that since there'll be another round of review for the, for another draft of the plan in the future. So we will build on that. Another, another piece of, during, in November, the village manager and the planner, village planner at the time Greg, requested that we integrate the capital budget into the Comprehensive Plan Update. And, you know, typically a comprehensive up, comprehensive plan, I think it's a good, that was a good thing to do. Typically comprehensive plans are good ways to help inform the capital budget. And so we, we, we integrated the pieces of the village capital budget into a draft that we used to haven't seen yet, but it's something that had produced, we completed in May 19th, 2020. This is letter E in my memo. And, and so that second draft of the complan update, which you completed on the, in May 19th, is, which included the comprehensive, sorry, the capital budget items that the village manager and planner, the planner would, like, asked us to include. And it also includes all the revisions based on the comments people have given us, which I just talked about. And the, in, the one other thing that I added since in, in March, things kind of changed everywhere. And I asked Greg, I said, you know, we can't, you know, the comp plan, we can't just be silent on this because there's impacts that the COVID-19 pandemic is having in every community. Some are short-term impacts, but there also could be long-term impacts. And so what this May 19th draft that the planner and village manager also reviewed also includes a discussion of COVID-19 and the pandemic and its impacts. It was my first pass at kind of coming up with something to say about the pandemic, its impact in the village and the responses. And so it was kind of my first pass at it, that was probably done in April or May. And so what I've done is because I, that's something I think it's, would be important for you to look at sooner rather than later. So I included those two pages in the memo that, in this memo, the June 18th that I'm talking through, the two pages of that, of that, of that, it's the introductory section of the plan, which includes the discussion on pandemic is in there. And that's something we can, we can talk about now or another time. And the, and so the, the next step, we, I, the village manager and the planner, and the planner gave comments back on the May 19th draft. And so my next step, at least according to the, my next step would be to produce a final second draft, and this is a version that will be ready for the second round of public comment. And the last part of the memo then gives you a suggested timeline. The suggested timeline that I sent over email to the village manager is similar to the one I incorporated in the memo. And I know there were some comments about that. And I, I integrated a few potential, just a few things in the memo, a few kind of tweaks in the memo on red, but largely I just, I left the timetable as it, as it was presented on the 12th over that email and just indicated, for example, a new village planner apparently starting on the, on the 13th of July. And so I guess, I guess a few of the things that, besides anything else you'd like to discuss, any questions, is, is, is talking about this timeline, how to, how to, how to best complete this process. It's been going on for a number of years, but we've adapted to it as we've, you know, as we've gone along. So that's one thing, the timeline. And the second thing is if there's, if you have anything to talk about regarding the write-up I had done on the pandemic, that's another thing we could talk about now. But those two items, the kind of iron, are ironing out a timeline. And I could, I could talk with the timeline a bit next. And the second part is the pandemic piece.
So Neil, I haven't been to the website recently. Is the changes that you made in marking, in tracking mode or just incorporated?
Right now, the, the changes are, they're, they're, they're in a table format and indicates the page number. And so the, the draft itself, I think that's something you had requested in the past. I could, I could do that. I could, to make it easier for review, the BOT, rather than having you look at the table and try to find out which page number, what page has been changed, I can actually mark up the, in the next draft, what, what has been changed, so you can see very easily what's been, what's been changed. So right now, it doesn't exist as a red line, as a red line version.
I think the red line version is a very helpful tool, not only for the BOT, but for everybody else as they go through this. Otherwise, you have a tremendous amount of stuff to read.
So.
I have a few questions for Neil, is somebody else on board have questions? Victor, go ahead, buddy.
I have, yes. Well, thank you, great to see you again, Neil. I mean, this, this, this process where, has been taking longer than expected, but I think we're railing it in now. I, I'll just cut to the chase here. In addition to the red line version, I would also think BOT should see that red line version before it goes out to public comment.
Okay.
I have all deference and I, I know your work, but the exchange between you and, and that happened in May, let's see what, what that, what was the product of that in red line version.
Sure.
Once, once we get a chance to see it, then, and it could be a matter of a week, then I think you should, you, we will be okay for you to just post it out there. So I think that will maybe delay us one, one week, but since this is a BOT-led action, I, I think once it goes out to public comment, we have our signature there, you know. We, we have the responsibility. So, so we, I think, I would suggest to my colleagues that we get, we get to see that version as it stands today, before it goes public. And maybe offer a week for us to give, give back any comments, but I, I do think we cannot delay that further. So that's, that's step number one. So that would move things just one week. And on the tail end, I just think having, having a public hearing in, in August is, is, is very difficult. It's not gonna, it will be, it will upset a lot of people that I know, that I think will know. I think we just not add anything, but just spread it out and have that last public hearing in September, in our second meeting in September. That will also allow us to, to have that final, final looked us to, by all of us in, in August before it goes, and it goes, it circulated to all the public and the land use boards. Nobody's going to respond in August, but it'll be available for a good month and a half, so that people can then, then come back. So instead of just spreading things out, and I do have, I have a red line version of those dates, but I'll, I'll let other comments and I can offer that, that, that outline after all this comment, or whenever you think it's appropriate. But I don't want to just take too long. Others may have comments and I'll look for that in the meantime.
Nora or Kelly?
I, I agree, we should extend the schedule a little bit, especially since some of the land use boards don't really meet in August. So they wouldn't have the opportunity to meet as a board. And it is a type one action, so it's gonna be circulated widely. So I think waiting, skipping, waiting till September, I mean, sticking with the schedule we have now, but waiting till September for the final hearing, it's probably gonna be the most practical.
Along those lines, one of the concerns I have is your last item is that you have the public hearing and adoption at the same date. And I do not believe that that's a prudent approach. Like, if the public has something that they raise that should be included, then you can adopt that night.
That's the decision board will make, you know, yeah, I agree with you, Dan. But you open the public hearing, you see what you get, right? It's like anytime you adopt a law.
I, you know, Tom, I, I'll just throw in, because I, I was in touch with the flood committee and the traffic committee today, and Shannon Purdy did mention that the Vision Zero Committee should, should weigh in. We're not yet having the ad hoc committees meet in July, so I think this delay is good to the extent we can build in some time for the ad hoc committees to discuss this, you know, in Zoom, or I don't know how we're gonna do that, work it out with Jerry and village staff, but maybe only the ad hoc committees who want to meet to discuss the public plan, we can arrange something, but somehow we, we need to have an opportunity for them to weigh in.
I agree with what you're all saying about delaying it. I, I would actually like to see it happen when we're meeting in Villatoll. I don't know if that, I mean, maybe in September or October, we can go back to having regular meetings in Villatoll. I, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's pie in the sky, but.
I also think that, I was looking, I was comparing the draft that I have, which was September, to the October draft that's up. And I think that the September draft doesn't have information about Vision Zero, but there have been a few things that were added. There's a few pages that have been added, maybe about 15 pages are a little bit different, some more illustrations, but there are a couple of things that got added. And I think that's part of it. So we should make sure that the, that the committees have the most recent draft, the October one, not the September one.
We should give them the one that we approve after it's redlined, right?
That's what I was, I was gonna about to say that, Mayor.
Yeah. We should wait until the Board of Trustees has the red line one approved and then circulate it before, you know, so they can have the most up-to-date one. Neil, my questions or my concerns were about the pandemic.
Yes.
I know a lot of people in this community, and a lot of people I know are working remotely. Is there any, in, in the planning world, is there any data or speculation about how extensively that's gonna continue post-COVID? Because I, I think it's a, you know, cost benefit for businesses.
Without a doubt. Right now, I'm trying to stay as, read as much as I can about what's happening. As far as the, the remote work, I think, I think it's still gonna be, I, I know that people are enjoying, the majority of people, whether both personally and as well as just reading the materials out there, are really enjoying working from home, generally speaking, and are planning and negotiating with their employers to work out some sort of, you know, joint arrangement where they would, they could do both, remote work and commute, two days a week, three days a week. I think right now, offices are still adjusting. Right now, I think that's, that's something to be watched, because the offices are now opening up right now, even in New York City. They're, you know, the realtors are really trying to do as much, at least the big realtors are trying to do as much as possible to create safe environments in the office building, so people feel safe going to the, to the, to work. But in reality, I think it's, I think we're still a little early to be able to say how it's gonna, how it's gonna impact.
As I have heard anecdotal from commercial real estate buildings in New York City, where tenants are trying to now renegotiate to have less space.
Absolutely, without a doubt. Less space, and also in some cases, they, with it, you know, within, within their spaces, they have to reduce the amount of people in order to create more space between people. And so that's another thing, the rearranging workspaces for that. My workplace, we're actually, which I haven't gone to the office yet, but it's, we're welcome to go, but we haven't been called back into, into our building yet, probably not until July. But I think we're gonna see in the next several months how the transition goes and whether employers are really gonna offer employees concessions in terms of commuting arrangements versus working from home. It's, I mean, it's, it's worked generally very well across the board for public meetings, for corporate purposes, working from home, people have been effective. And so let's see, let's see how it goes. But that's an important thing, planning-wise, like, that's a very important question, planning-wise.
And as part of a corollary to that, there's been a, you know, at least I've heard from, you know, anecdotally from real estate people, that there's also been a renewed migration from New York City. It's hard to keep a house on the market these days.
Yes.
But the people are moving up from the city because they don't wanna deal with the subway and they wanna work from home. And the, you know, this is, this whole COVID and some of the reactions to COVID have really spooked a lot of people.
Yeah, without a doubt. That's one of the things I did write about in the, that little two-page piece on the pandemic that I included, is just that, New Yorkers have, were already fed up, a lot of New Yorkers were already fed up before the pandemic. And the pandemic has really, has really kind of been the last straw. And I've seen a number of articles where realtors are, especially, I think, just the other day in the New York Times, they're talking about the Catskills, realtors' phones are ringing off the hook. So, and I think, whereas people, people enjoy their urban environments, they're just craving more space that smaller towns than the Marinex offered, even beyond the Marinex. So that's something I wrote about, something, a trend to kind of watch. I, I do anticipate that you already have a lot of Brooklynites moving to Marinick and other folks in the city. And I, I wonder how, if that trend is gonna speed up and that has, you know.
There was an interesting article in the Times about what neighborhoods emptied out in end of March, beginning of April. And they, they used cellphone pings to figure out where everybody had gone.
Right.
More affluent communities where people had, you know, a summer home, where they could go to mom and dad's house, those, those communities lost 25% of their population.
Yeah, my dad just told me that one of our family friends, they actually rented a house, I don't know if it's the town or the village, but they're like, oh yeah, they rented a house in Marinick. So there's, they're, they're in Marinick now.
Way upstate Marinick. Anybody else on board, any more questions for Neil or comments?
Thank you for plugging along.
What you hear is that we wanna move this, you know, the end game into the fore.
I have a proposal, Mayor. Because we have to, if I may, I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Not yet, now I don't.
Okay. I, what I did is I just took Neil's proposal and I've been working on it. I couldn't circulate this before because it's been a work. As, as I moved, after lunch, I started doing this, lunch break, and, and actually doing it right now. So what I'm doing here is working out of his timeline and insert some of the things that we've discussed today. Essentially, here we are, and we've discussed Neil to provide the red line version. If we can give him a, if we, if we can look at that and we have a work session next week, then that, could that be finalized so that it be circulated for the boards, commission and the public? So we, essentially he had, he had the Wednesday to prepare it and he'll be going out to, to the, to the, to the website on, on, on the Thursday. Actually, by then, we will have a new village planner. And then the village comments are three weeks as proposed. So we will have the first round of comments by, by July 23rd. Then we meet, we meet, we meet the 27th. At that point, we can discuss where we stand, we can start CICER. And that's when the final document is released. That then gives everybody the, circulates kind of the last, last round for everybody to comment and to get it back to us, to get us back comments sometime in September, so that it, that allows us to have one more meeting before that final adoption is really a final adoption, but it has incorporated opportunities so that it's a more doable final option. And I know this was just, I just finished this. So I suggest we, I circulate this to all of you, to Neil, of course, to, to our village manager. He may want to, and we can, and we can finalize it by next week so that we can move on to other business that we have a long.
The only, the only caveat I would have is where you have September 29th, right? Just put BOT public hearing, don't put for adoption, because that, it looks like it's a foregone conclusion that we're gonna adopt it then. You know what I mean?
Okay, the first draft is done here.
I think, actually, one, one suggestion, Victor, because I, I won't be able to provide it today. I will probably, the red line version, because there's a few comments in the schedule in the memo. Basically, I'll need until about Thursday of this week to be able to, there's some edits I need to incorporate, which I spoke with the village manager about last week, because he reviewed it. And then I, and then I also need to do the red line, so you can see it. So I need a little bit more time to, to just prepare that. It's not ready right now, so I'll probably need until about Thursday. I can, I can send that on Thursday.
I put by five, by Friday morning, how's that?
Sure, that'll work.
But, but that'll, if we're meeting on Monday, that doesn't give a lot of time. My suggestion is build in at least one week, preferably two weeks for the board to go through it.
So why don't we, why don't we, the board go through it at our first July meeting?
I think that's the 13th, Mayor.
Yeah. What about that? I mean, I, I don't, listen, I'd rather, okay, give everybody time and not feel rushed and do it right and have the village planner there. It's a nice way to start, hey, how you doing? Here's the, here's the plan.
That's the day he starts. Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I'd probably give us time and, you know. Maybe if, and if we go into October, we go into October.
I'm not leaving tents, I'll be around.
Not even coming to Marinick.
I might be able to come in October if things open.
Because this is, you know, this is a big, this is a big ticket item. And, you know, I'd rather not, I mean, if we have to do it on Zoom, we do it on Zoom, but I'd rather do it in the courtroom. But, you know, I, I might just be having a fantasy here that we'll be back in the courtroom, but.
And I just wanna say September 29th is a Tuesday, so I think the date should be September 28th.
That is, that was changed because there's a Jewish holiday right there.
Yep.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It'll be Tuesday.
Then our village calendar, okay, right.
Should it be Tuesday to 29th, is that what you're saying, Nora?
It's, okay, so it says that our, the village calendar says we have it Monday, the 28th, but apparently it got postponed to the 29th and the calendar hasn't reflected.
Okay, so it should say Tuesday to 29th.
I believe so, well, yeah.
Let's change that, Victor.
Yes, I'll do that. And essentially, everything moves, three moves. We, more weeks, but more or less trying to finish by, by, by the first weekend, by the first meeting in October.
Yeah, which would be the 12th.
All right, I'll just do those changes, circulate them to all of you and we, we need to discuss further, we will finalize on next week, next Monday.
Thanks, Victor.
I just want, I just wanna throw this out there, although we had discussed only having one meeting in July and one meeting in August, but our calendar says we have two. And if that's gonna be better for the comprehensive plan, maybe we should stick with it, but we're gonna have to do a different resolution, because we, in December, we only scheduled one per month, but we actually put two on the calendar.
Well, I thought we scheduled two, you sure, Nora?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure we only scheduled one. I meant to double-check and I didn't, I will double-check.
Talking about having two, because we, we always schedule one and then we have two anyway.
Well, last summer, we certainly did.
Yeah. I mean, as I joked before, I'd like to get paid by the meeting. We scheduled, I did, I was just informed that we scheduled two.
Okay.
By, so, all right. Neil, anything else you wanted to leave us with?
Um, no, I'm, I'm, nice to see you all again and I'm glad you'll get a chance to see the draft be sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Neil, stay well.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
See you soon. Okay. The next up on the agenda, I'm just gonna go to 1C because I see Catherine Barney is here and her illustrious father, ex-chief John Barney. And they are here to talk about a replacement for Engine 40, is that correct? You can unmute yourself there, Jessica.
Yes, that's correct.
How are you?
Good, how are you, thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening.
We have many audience.
Yeah, Chief Costa is also, I believe, in the attendee section of this as well.
We could promote him to a participant.
Yes, please.
Absolutely, please do.
Primrose and who else we have there?
Well, Costa's not here, just Pete Primrose.
We have Pete.
I'm here, I just don't have a camera.
A camera.
There he is.
There he is.
He's coming up. Okay.
He does not have a camera.
All right, so we wanted to present our research that we have been doing for about two and a half years on a replacement apparatus for our current Engine 40, which is used for initial fireline attack. I'm going to share the presentation with you right now. I believe you have a copy of it. There have been some minor adjustments that were made, but you'll see that in this presentation.
Okay, Jessica, it's all yours. We'll show you.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that right now. I just have to move this, sorry.
Take your time. Take your time.
Okay, so we started researching in March of two thousand seventeen for possible vendors to use for a replacement apparatus as we're being guided by NFPA nineteen oh one and nineteen eleven. I'm sure the guidelines for apparatus maintenance, building apparatus specifications, maintenance and the retiring and replacing of apparatus. We had an extensive crew of, as you can see, ex chiefs, ex captains of the company, many of whom are current drivers of the current engine forty, as well as our current captain Eugene Doherty and current lieutenant Patrick Doherty. We were working extensively on the specifications that we are using right now with Hudson Valley Fire Equipment, who are the local vendors for Seagrave Apparatus, which is out of Wisconsin. And we decided on this uh this manufacturer, Seagrave, after visiting a couple of conventions and shows in Long Island as well as Pennsylvania, speaking to various vendors. And we really liked what Seagrave had to offer us in the Village of Mariner and in the community. So we'd like to go through that a little bit with you there now. Okay, so we first assessed our need for a replacement. Currently, there are guidelines that show us what is an exceeding general lifespan of an initial attack fire apparatus. I referred to them previously, that's National Fire Protection Agency NFPA nineteen oh one and nineteen eleven. They guide fire departments in the standards for purchasing, maintenance, retirement and disposal of apparatus and recommends apparatus older than twenty years be removed from frontline service or initial service. Currently, engine forty is twenty-five years old, so we're already five years past that general lifespan that's recommended. Um, we have over six thousand eight hundred eighty-eight point eight engine hours, which equals about a hundred and seventy-two thousand and and hundred and twenty hundred and seventy-two thousand engine miles. That's calculated with one engine hour equals twenty-five miles. We have over two hundred ninety-six point one pump hours on this apparatus, as well as four forty-one thousand four hundred twenty-two plus road miles. We respond to approximately five hundred gallons per year. And we're seeking replacement in accordance to the Village of Mariner apparatus near term planning timeline, which was established collaboratively between current, at the time, chief Dean Galitoff and the the village board at the time, as well as village manager Richard Slingerland. This is the the timeline that I just referred to. As you can see, engine forty has been marked in red. Today, we're at twenty-twenty. We should have been looking according to these guidelines between two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty for a replacement. The engine forty-two nineteen eighty-nine Seagrave was replaced, retired and replaced in two thousand sixteen. And we currently use engine thirty-nine, which is a nineteen eighty-five Seagrave, as a reserve apparatus. Whenever our one of our rigs of the fleet are going through maintenance or has issues, we use engine thirty-nine in its place until that rig has been properly maintained. Current engine forty is a nineteen ninety-six R.D. Murray manufacturer fire attack pumper. It has a Spartan Gladiator ten-person full tilt cab, an Allison World Transmission four hundred fifty horsepower waterous two-stage pump, fifteen hundred gallons per minute, a seven hundred fifty gallon T-shaped water tank, onboard generator and onboard seam lighting, both portable and fixed, and it has an aluminum cab. It's designed for initial fire attack and water supply, and it's being looked at as a possible replacement for the reserve rig of our fleet, the nineteen eighty-five Seagrave.
Say that last part about the nineteen eighty-five Seagrave.
Uh, it's being it's being looked at as if we move forward and get a replacement engine forty to for it to replace the reserve rig, which is a nineteen eighty-five Seagrave. So that would be our spare apparatus that would support us when one of our fleet is in the shop.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, what we're looking at is a twenty twenty-one FWD Seagrave, seven-person marauder, two full tilt cab, a Cummins X twelve five hundred horsepower engine, waterous two-stage pump with fifteen hundred gallons per minute, a seven hundred fifty gallon L-shaped water tank. This is the major difference between the two rigs as the L-shaped water tank allows for the hose bed to be lower and allows for manpower to be able to more safely and efficiently take the line off the rear of the engine for initial fire attack. Um, we also want an onboard generator and onboard seat lighting, just as the current engine forty. The highlight of the Seagrave apparatus is that it has a stainless steel cab and body. This was the predominant reason why we were looking at this vendor. It's seen as the strongest and safest in the industry, which is our number one goal in looking for a replacement for engine forty. It would also be designed for initial fire attack and water supply.
Can I ask you a question there, Jessica? What about flooding situations? I know for fire, this is probably the top notch. But the the this pumps, you know, just and and the capabilities, would would they be helpful in a in a flooding? Scenario or or not really?
History has proven here that the fire department generally does not get involved in pumping out anything in in flood situations due to the amount of debris that you usually find in floodwaters. It winds up causing you more damage for your pumps than it's really worth. So the history has has been that way probably since the mid-sixties.
Thank you, Chief. That's that's great. Thank you.
So these slides here are just showing some examples of the front bumper design that would be included in the specifications that we've gone through with Seagrave. An example of the exact compartment space. The compartment space in this example has actual it's superior to the current engine forty. It has bigger compartments for us to be able to store more equipment so that we can perform more of our tasks more efficiently.
It's much easier to organize things also.
We also have an example of a similar pump panel layout that our pump operator would use to make sure that the proper flow of water is used at various types of fire scenes, as well as an example of the hose bed, which is lower in height to assist our manpower in getting the hose off in a timely fashion and as well as to repack it after a fire scene, which at that time people are very spent and exhausted, so it would allow them to do that with less force and effort. Here you have a picture of a preliminary mechanical drawing of the proposed engine forty from Seagrave. The dimensions are slightly different, but this is the general idea of the design that we were looking at.
Yeah, you you'll know the we've cut back on the camp crew cab down to five seats to enable us to have more room to fully gear up when we get to the scene. There's no more really, it's frowned on to come in your civilian clothes and and go into the fire scene without proper gear, so they tried to gear up. We've allowed more room to make it easier, especially with the COVID. Now, we sometimes have to use some PB on top of our firefighting gear as well. The hose bed, as we mentioned, is probably going to be a foot lower than what it is now, actually, at least a foot lower. Again, it's it's a safety factor for us. Packing hoses done from up on the top as well, so you're not up as high, number one, and it's easier to pack. Basically, the the pump will be essentially the same as we have now. So the familiarization for the drivers is going to be an easy changeover. And the compartments are a little larger, makes it easier to display our equipment and have it mounted much more efficiently than it is now.
And also, these dimensions have been worked so that the apparatus would be able to get all to all parts of the community and be able to go under bridges and any anything that may be seen as an obstacle for some vehicles of this size. Dimensions fit properly.
Is it the same length and width as the old engine?
It's I think it's essentially four inches longer than the current one. That was that was due to partially due to the size of the hose bed that we got. It affects the back end. The turning radius will be essentially the same.
Gotcha. Okay, Jessica, go.
Okay, so this this is basic auxiliary equipment that would be necessary for the full operation of the new engine forty. As we are looking to have the old engine forty as the reserve rig to replace engine thirty-nine, that equipment will be going with that rig, so we would need some equipment to assist us in fully complying with NFPA and the responsibilities of our job. We're looking at a blowhard electric battery operated fan with a smoke injector, a thermal imaging camera, a combustible gas detector unit, SCBA unit bubbles for our PPE and our SCBA breathing apparatus, two fire hooks, iron sets, two fire hooks with pickhead axes, one aluminum pipe pole six feet, one eight-foot aluminum pipe pole, which is usually used for overhaul and looking for extension at fire scenes, large diameter hose wrench kits, spanner wrench kits and ball gate valves for when we're hooking the hydrants to gain water supply. This is just the basic equipment that we would be looking for to equip the new engine forty.
Can I ask a question about this, Jessica?
Sure.
And it would you can't repurpose the this equipment from the old truck?
So engine thirty-nine is very limitedly equipped. Whenever it goes into service for one of our other apparatus, we often have to transfer from that company, from their rig, the equipment that will be needed to fulfill responsibilities onto engine thirty-nine. So that would have to be the case for whichever reserve rig we use going forward.
Engine thirty-nine has probably the oldest scut packs in the department on there, some of which should be coming out of service soon because of their age. Through the years, equipment has been broken and and damaged in from engine thirty-nine as it goes from house to house, and it just hasn't been completely replaced. So with the new with engine forty sliding over to the the old engine forty, sliding over into thirty-nine spot, it should be fully equipped with what's on there now.
So so does this new engine just the the new engine become engine forty-one?
No, it becomes engine forty.
Becomes becomes engine forty and the old thirty-nine number will just be transferred to the current engine forty.
Okay, so when you say engine thirty-nine, that's that's like from time to memorial, that's the backup engine?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Currently, the eighty-five Seagrave.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Sure, we also would need hose to equip the apparatus for fire service. Here just outlines what we would need for each size diameter hose. We use various diameters for different types of tasks within the fire service. And these this was stated pricing through AAA Emergency Supply Company, which is a vendor the fire department uses frequently. And so this is what engine forty essentially would need.
The different lengths, I can explain if anyone has a question, the different lengths are used for different purposes. They're what we call trash line in the front located in the front of the apparatus. That's the quick quickest water on the on on a fire scene that we that a driver can give them. It's right on the front bumper and it's usually three to three to two to three lengths of hose. Each of the lengths are generally fifty feet. When you get to the cross lays in the middle of the apparatus, which I can show you on the picture, they're essentially two hundred feet each, which is four lengths each. And they're color coded to match the pump panel handles and controls. The larger diameter hose, the two and a half and three inches, all comes off the back of the apparatus for large diameter assault on a on a fire scene. And the five inch that you see listed above here is for supply, both from the hydrant and from one apparatus to ladder or to another apparatus as a supply line.
So let me just try to figure this out. The five inch gets hooked up to the fire hydrant, the fire hydrant gets hooked up to the engine and then you're fighting a fire with two-inch and three-inch hose, is that right?
That's correct. The five inch comes from the hydrant to the fire apparatus. Or or a large supply like if if the pumper was feeding the ladder pipe, it would give it a five-inch line as a supply line. The other the other sizes, the inch and three-quarter and two-inch and two and a half and three-inch are for actual fire assault.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then final slide is just the projected cost at this time of a replacement apparatus and the project timeline. I have revised the timeline due to the COVID nineteen pandemic as we weren't able to originally meet in March as we had anticipated. So the timeline has been changed. Like I said, in May of two thousand seventeen, the apparatus committee convened and assessed the need for replacement. In January, we completed primary research meeting with different vendors. We had visitations to shows to look at various equipments in in real in real time and consultations with Hudson Valley Fire to discuss the possibility of a Seagrave. We're here now with the work session and presentation to the board. And the other parts of the timeline are in it. If we do decide to move forward in this process is what could be anticipated as the rest of the timeline.
Manufacturing from Seagrave from the day we sign we sign a contract would be within nine months. Would be the manufacturing, that would be the delivery time.
Okay, so the the is kind of like custom made, right?
That's exactly correct. There are some basics that Seagrave uses on every piece of equipment, but the size of the engine, so on and so forth, chassis, hose bed, things like that, and all are accustomed to our request.
Well, thank you. This is this is a very informative presentation. And Captain Barney, thank you very much for doing. There are two of the other chiefs on the line. I wonder if they would like to comment. Chief Costa and Chief Primrose, you guys want to jump in or?
Benny, why don't you go ahead?
Hey, hello all. Can you hear me or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so one of the reasons we're going, we're looking towards the Seagrave is, as you can see, the history with the Seagrave as our spare apparatus slash backup apparatus is an eighty-five. And we also have a a two thousand and one Seagrave, which is engine thirty-eight. They've done well for us and and with all the advancements in protection for firefighters, what Jessica mentioned was the stainless cab and and the rear part of the apparatus. There's a lot of protection for us, and as you know, if you've seen on 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 the news, apparatus being hit from behind from other vehicles, tractor trailers, whatever have you. And we're just looking for more protection and a better apparatus to serve us.
And just so folks at home know, Chief Costa, the Village of Mariner Fire Department responds to a lot of emergencies on Interstate ninety-five where, you know, you're taking your life into your hands sometimes.
Absolutely. It's crazy up there, to be honest with you.
The one one other point on the stainless steel body is it the amount of salt that's used locally now on snow and ice, it's very resistant to the salt, so there's less damage to the engine body to begin with.
And I'd just like to mention that, you know, the history of the fire department, we try to keep our apparatus as long as we can and we maintain them well and take care of them. But as you know, as they get older, they start to break down and and there are some issues with the current engine forty, which can be repaired and it's it's nothing that's really expensive. But, you know, it's going to get worse as the years go on if it's used as a a initial attack, a frontline apparatus. And with the advancements and protections and and everything that we have in our ninety-six Murray is way more advanced than the eighty-five Seagrave. So we're we're kind of upgrading our fleet and, you know, all of our fleet, you know, our backup and our and our frontline apparatus.
So Chief Costa, when when engine forty becomes engine thirty-nine, the current engine thirty-nine can be sold or auctioned, is that right?
That's correct. If the Fire Department Council deems that that's what we're going to do, then then yes, absolutely.
Chief Costa, you mentioned repairs.
Chief Costa, you mentioned repairs. Do you have information of what the repairs cost with the last years on this engine?
I don't have that.
The other engines?
No, I do not. I don't have that.
I may be able to add something to that. The budget for vehicle repairs keeps going up until this year when, because of the shortfall, we had to cut back. But the price, the costs keep going up and the reality is that the older an apparatus is, the harder it is to find parts. To the point that I've actually seen cases quite, quite a long time ago now, but it's still can happen where actual custom work ends up having to be done to replace a part on something that's broken on a, on an older rig. So the repair costs as the rig gets older, they, they go up exponentially. I don't have any actual numbers for you, Trustee Natchez. I would have to go back through the KBS system even before I was chief in order to provide more than the past year.
I think for the future, it might be good to do that for all the, for all the engines. So that information can be tracked.
Yes, that's also, that's good information. But also remember that this apparatus is ending its life in a initial response, first line attack apparatus. So irregardless of the maintenance factor, the apparatus does need to be replaced in order to proficiently serve the community.
Who does the maintenance on the vehicles?
Excelsior Garage does most of our maintenance.
Okay, right here in the village?
Yes.
Any other trustees have questions?
Yep, I've got a couple. What do we think the auxiliary equipment is going to cost?
The auxiliary equipment, so Chief Costa may be able to give a ballpark for you on that. We tried to get that figure for you, but due to the pandemic, our suppliers were not able to provide us with that information at this time?
Yeah, she's, she's correct because we had a list that we gave to our vendor and they were not able to fill it because the pandemic with the staff that they had. And I can get that info eventually, but we don't have that right now.
Ballpark, whether it's, you know, $100,000 or, you know,
No.
$10,000? I have no idea. So I'm just...
At an educated guess, I guess maybe under 20.
Okay.
That's for the, that's not including the hose. That's just the other.
That's right. Thank you.
You had a number for the hose. You had 24 grand for the hose.
I saw that. Yep.
Right, right.
Nora Victor?
I'm sorry, I had, I had one more question, which is, so I see that the NFPA recommends replacement after a certain number of years. Does the NFPI also have recommendations for when things should be replaced in terms of the engine hours, the pump hours, and the mileage? Because we had numbers for those as well.
NFPA basically states that the apparatus, after it meets a certain year of service,
Yeah.
it needs to be replaced or put into reserve status. As a, as a frontline apparatus, there's a limit to it. As a reserve, there's a, there's not a limit as long as you can keep up with the safety features needed on the spare apparatus. Because that apparatus is not going to be in the frontline every day. So that apparatus is, is, is not as used as the frontline apparatus.
And is that regardless of whether it's been used very much or not? Just age alone means it should be moved out of frontline?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Sorry, Ben.
That's okay.
So it, it comes down to quite frequently availability of replacement parts. And because as rigs get older, it, it becomes much more, much more difficult to find replacements. You couldn't, you couldn't find a, easily find a new, an alternator for a 15-year-old car. You'd have to search for it.
And do we have any idea if we auction that old Engine 39, how much that could get us?
Unfortunately, I can't say what you would get, but you're not going to get that much for it, to be honest with you. I believe when we replaced Engine 40 and 96, ex Chief Barney can elaborate on this, but I don't think we got maybe more than seven grand at that time for that apparatus.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that, but, you know, that apparatus is very old. And in order to bring it up to today's standards, it's almost impossible, but it would cost a fortune.
Another item, which is important, is the security of the fleet and our ability to maintain it is an important component of our ISO rating. And when you don't have, right now, we have an ISO rating of three, which is, you know, phenomenal for an all-volunteer company. It'd be very hard for us to find one, even with professional. So the investment that, you know, the municipality makes in its fire apparatus saves money for the homeowners in their fire insurance.
Gotcha.
The ISO, the age of the apparatus is one part of the equation in the rating that the village gets from the ISO, which affects everyone's fire apparatus, fire insurance.
Okay. Nora?
No, I thank you for the thorough, thorough presentation, thorough and professional presentation.
Appreciate your work. Yeah.
Very helpful.
If there's no other questions, I would just like to thank the board at this time for putting up with us and letting, allowing us to come before you with this presentation. Available to answer any questions at any time.
I think we need to thank you.
Ex Chief Barney, you came up to me at the raffle night and you wanted to present this and then COVID hit us and we just never got to it and I apologize for that. But you, you especially ex-Captain Barney did an excellent job preparing us, answered a lot of questions, you know, and I think we all learned something here. And, you know, we'll be giving this the due consideration it deserves and hopefully providing you what you need in the future. Thank you all for everything you do, day in and day out. It's really appreciated. You know, I look at all the work that must have went into how you picked out this apparatus. And I really appreciate that we have volunteers who not only will show up at fires, but actually put in hundreds of hours into the administration of the fire department. And it says a lot for the whole crew. Thank you all very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Right now, thank you.
Take care. Have a good night. Be safe.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. I think we were going to go at six o'clock into an executive session. We have a
I think.
Labor attorney waiting for us on the other end. Both. And, you know, what do we want to handle in this executive session? Because we're going to have a meeting next Monday. We have an executive session there too, and we have more on the agenda to handle tonight. So, you know, we definitely have to have the personnel matter. And then there was another matter the village attorney sent us today. Let me just look it up. It's Gonzales Rivera versus the Village of Amerenick. And that is a litigation that needs to be timely addressed. So could we go in on the employment matter and on Gonzales Rivera and take some of the other weight matters and hold them over till next Monday? Does that be fine with everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there are a couple of employment matters that are, that we've been notified about. So only one needs the labor attorney.
Okay. But what I'm asking for is to hold the other ones off until next Monday. And doing one with the labor attorney tonight and Gonzales tonight.
Well, why don't, I mean, we're adding the Gonzales matter and why don't we see if we can, see how far we can get? And if we, if we, if we don't enter executive session to discuss those things and we have time, we won't be able to do it. So maybe we should make the, just put it in as part of our motion and see if we can get to it.
Okay.
That makes sense. Let's just get in there though, because the lawyers are billing.
I think, right.
All right. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make the motion for the first three. And then can somebody figure out from Bob's memo for the fourth one, fourth item?
The fourth under Gonzales item is just litigation.
Right. Well, so it's, I think Victor had made a request. So the first item is to go into executive session on a land use matter pursuant to 101 F of the New York State Public Officers Law as it relates to the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or persons or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, appointment, employment, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And then the second one is land use attorney, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered into executive session pursuant to 105 F of the New York State Public Officers Law as it relates to the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment of employment, promotion, motion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And then C, Hampshire Recreation LLC versus Village of Amerenick, the Village of Amerenick Planning Board, motion to enter executive session pursuant to 105 1D as it relates to proposed pending or current litigation. And then the last matter is
The same Gonzales Rivera, same section.
Yeah. So.
Same section, 105 1D relating to pending current litigation.
And we have to name the litigation.
Gonzales Rivera versus Village of Amerenick.
Thank you. Okay. So moved.
One minute, one minute. I think you haven't mentioned the labor issue that actually the attorneys were. Are we not, is there?
Yeah.
So it will be another, another matter under 101 1F, correct?
Right, having to do with the village employee.
105 1F, right?
Five, yes. This is wrong.
Okay. Add that?
It's five matters, yes.
Okay.
Nora, you making that motion?
So moved for all five. Second.
I can.
Corollary. Trustees, Richard?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Ma'am? Hi. Uh, senior executive session.
Okay.
Get my tea.
I just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna keep myself... I'm here for de-mapping. So I'll be on for de-mapping, but I just want to let you know that I'm here, but I'm gonna keep my video off until de-mapping comes up. So just an FYI. So I'll be on for de-mapping, but I just want to let you know that I'm here, but I'm gonna keep my video off until de-mapping comes up. So just an FYI.
Tom, do you have a copy of the proclamation for Louise or do you need to share my screen?
No, you know what? She's not gonna be here.
Okay.
We're gonna wait on it. She had to go to her grandchild.
Okay.
Thank you though.
You got it.
And you said of earmuffs? Headset?
Yeah, the what?
You said headsets?
Yeah, I got some earbuds. The other ones I was using need to recharge again. These are not the fake earbuds I bought off Wish. These are real earbuds, which I think I got through Amazon.
Apple.
You know it's real if you got it from Amazon, right?
Well, I thought everything on the internet was true.
Everything, absolutely.
We did do those. Now that I paid off my phone through Verizon, I switched to Alties and I pay 20 bucks a month for my cell account.
With internet?
Well, Cablevision Alties has that thing now.
Oh.
Yeah, so I started paying 90 bucks a month for my Verizon plan. I'd rather pay 20 bucks a month through Alties.
All right, fair enough. How's the service?
It's fine. It's basically as long as you bring your phone with you, it'll connect to any network. So basically, it's a Verizon phone picking up a Verizon signal, but just says Alties on it now. Service is fine.
You have to bring your phone, will you, right?
Yeah, we have to bring an unlocked phone with you.
You got that right.
I don't know, your humor is just going over my head, Augie.
Well, you said you have to bring your cellphone with you. How else would you phone call if you didn't bring your cellphone? That's what I wanna know.
I'm gonna start communicating with carrier pigeons. Maybe look at a really long string so I can call you from Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Run a cable.
That's what.
A clothesline.
Remember one of those things, Nextels that was authorized?
Yeah, it was, you know, back in the early 2000s. Contractors loved them because they could use that direct connect and not actually dial anyone.
Yeah.
I think all the municipalities had it. That's what I first started out with.
When I first started in the elevators, you got a beeper and the beeper didn't even, didn't even display a number. It just beeped and you had to call your office.
Yeah.
George, okay, is everybody?
Through the days.
Who we missing?
Victor's video or audio are not on.
But he's here, okay.
I don't know, is he here?
I'm here.
Okay.
Spoolzino here?
Your video was on.
There you go. No.
Wait for Bob Spoolzino.
No, I'm here.
You're here?
Nope.
You're not on TV.
We're just hiding from him.
Okay, all right. Enjoy what you hide. Uh, okay. We are coming out of an executive session. We closed the executive session. We're actually still in the work session right now, and I just need to report that in the executive session, we voted to settle a case Gonzalez Rivera versus the Village of Amaraic. We settled it for $18,500. It was a four to one decision. Now I need a motion to end the work session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of ending the work session?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and here we are, and it is the 7:30 Board of Trustees regular session with Amaraic. Welcome, everybody. If you're watching at home and you're gonna be speaking, please turn off your phone or whatever you have, and please join me in. Aye.
Special reasons to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to open this meeting.
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Well, the Board of Trustees, we have actually two presentations on the agenda. The first one, we are going to postpone the presentation. Louise Dunaway, Louise is a long time.
No, hold on. Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
George just texted me that he's on mute. Can we unmute George?
Yeah, yeah. The presentation to Louise Dunaway. Ms. Dunaway is a longtime beloved Village employee. If you ever went to court, she made the experience, which can be a daunting experience, much more manageable and human and humane, and we will be presenting to her later date. Hopefully during the time when we can use the courtroom again. And. We'll give us the feedback. Ms. Lattner. And tonight, we have a special guest, a longtime friend of the Village of Amaraic, a man who has represented the Village of Amaraic in one capacity or another since the 90s. We have our friend, County Executive George Latimer, who is gonna give us an update on the COVID situation in Westchester County. Welcome, County Executive Latimer.
Tom, happy to be with you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I appreciate a few minutes just to give you a quick update on where we are. When I last visited, I guess that was about three or four months ago, and we didn't know exactly where we were gonna end up. So here we are, you know, on the downside of it. Are you still picking me up okay?
Yep.
Yes.
So as of today, we have countywide 557 active cases of COVID, and that number is down from a week ago of 775 cases, two weeks ago 951, and at one point we were at 10,000 cases. There's been a steady decline throughout the course of the last two months, about the end of March, beginning of April. And from a Amaraic Village standpoint, right now with a total of 429 people that have tested positive in the village, you have 14 of them that are still considered active cases. This compares to where you were two weeks ago. We had 24 active cases in the village, and even though you've had 400 some odd people test positive, the vast majority of them have worked through the two-week incubation period, and so they're out of harm's way. Countywide, we're under 90 people who are hospitalized for COVID, and at one point we had 1,200 people hospitalized for COVID, and while the the number of people that have died is a significant number, over 1,400, in the last few nights, there's been one or no fatalities, and we've had nights going back to the peak where we lost, you know, 35, 45 people in a night. So we're clearly heading in the right direction, and that is all across the county of Amaraic Village and in the other larger and smaller communities. With that said, tomorrow we enter phase three, as the governor has laid it out. I'm sure everybody's followed this, you know, we had these one a few weeks ago, and then phase two, which just ended today. What phase three means tomorrow for the for the business community is that in addition to outdoor dining, there will be limited indoor dining for those who are businesses, the restaurant businesses, and that of course, you know, starts energizing the community a lot more. We're dealing right now with a number of different restrictions that go with almost every business that opens, 50% capacity, hand sanitizing, masks, social distancing. So we're not back to, you know, the old normal as we knew it in February, but at least it's a significant step forward. Also, a series of personal care entities are gonna open tomorrow, things like tattoo parlors, waxing, tanning, massage therapy, things of that nature, and we're also gonna see a jump in the size of acceptable meeting groups from 10 to 25. And if it's socially distanced in the right context, then that probably opens up a few more of the activities and so forth. What you're doing right now, having a Zoom meeting as a legal meeting of the board, has been approved by the governor's executive order through July 6th, another two weeks, and we're pushing for the governor to extend that through the end of July, so that meetings that aren't gonna be in person can still be conducted, and official business of local governments can still be conducted. We use this way of the county legislature in the same way that you do, and we're looking for the company to advance it as much as possible. Basically, you know, we're in a better place today than we were. We're not out of the woods. There's still obviously no vaccine, no no antiviral that's gonna stop the disease of drugs. We don't really know if we're gonna see a second wave. We have to be prepared for it. So we're testing. We've tested a tremendous number, 239,000 people in Westchester County have been tested. That's out of a million people population, and there's hardly any jurisdiction that can point to that kind of a percentage of testing. And when you test what you're supposed to do, since you don't have all of the, you know, the viral and the vaccine, you have to test, identify positive, isolate, and contact trace so that people don't spread the disease. That's that's pretty much how we're, we played it for the last couple of months to some degree of success. With that, I'll just touch on a couple of other county issues. If you have any questions for me, fine, and then I'll be out of your way, so you can do the rest of your business. We announced today that we have impaneled a police reform and reinvention task force, which parallels with the governor, as required of all governments in New York State. That task force is made up of a lot of prominent people around the county. We have Mayo Bartlett and Leroy Frazier, both African-American lawyers, are chairing it, and with that, we're going to devise a plan that's in keeping with what the governor is involved in. The village and the town and other villages and cities all have to do a plan similarly, and at some point in time, working through your village administrator, perhaps your police chief will be happy to share what we're trying to do on our plan, maybe of some help to you as you try to prepare your plan, so that we work in harmony as much as possible. The census numbers are continuing to move along. We benefited from the fact that this pandemic stretched the due date of the census to October 31st. The original due date was July 31st, and they haven't started going door to door yet to identify, you know, people that haven't responded. Amaraic Village at this point has 66.3% of all households have responded to the census. That's two-thirds, almost exactly two-thirds. At the end of the 2010 census, Amaraic Village had 70.4% of the households. We're about 4% behind 10 years ago, with still between now and the end of October ahead of us to be able to hit those numbers. So I'd say you're in pretty good shape, but you know, the emphasis, it's harder in the last third of the population because you reach the harder to count pieces of the groups, and that all is there. And the final point I was just gonna mention in this quick update is that I'm not sure where the village's finances are. Most of our local governments, the county, the state, are at a very difficult set right now. We lost a lot of money on sales tax, which we had hoped that was gonna give us a strong future, and right now, we're gonna have to figure out how to compensate for that gap. Obviously, we're gonna do a number of things on our level. If at some point in time Jerry or Augie wanna chat with us so we know how we're closing our gap, whether that's your main, what you face, you've just done a bunch, so in a sense, you saw the problem straight in front of you. We did a budget before the the pandemic hit us, and so now we're having to deal with a budget that was not built knowing what the downside was. But if there is some benefit of exchange of that information, we're gonna try to do it without laying people off if we can, but you know, that'll that'll involve at the end of the day some federal assistance, and we'll see whether that comes or not. But with that, that's kind of a quick rush through a couple of major issues, and Mayor, I don't know if you or any of your colleagues have any questions for me. I'm happy to answer them, and up until the point that you pull out the hook and, you know, get off stage.
Thank you, George. You have a question? The county center was transformed into a makeshift hospital. Is that gonna stay viable in case we have a second wave?
Yeah, the the plan is for that to stay as is through the end of the year. We'd like to get it back for the basketball season, assuming there is a high school basketball season. We went to a lot of effort to have it used as home for section one after a couple of years of not being the home for section one finals, but we think that if there is a second wave that comes in the fall, and having those additional 110 hospital bedrooms or ICU compatible will be helpful. And, you know, some folks say, well, we haven't had anybody in there yet, and I hope we don't have to use it. If we never have to use it, then at least the money helped us avoid what happened in Italy and in Spain and a couple of other places where they where the the wave hit them, and they didn't have enough hospital capacity. We survived the first wave. At our peak hospitalization, we were, as I said, 1,200. We have 3,000 beds in Westchester County, and then we were concerned that other areas didn't have as many beds, and we might get their overflow, but it didn't happen. But we are gonna hold on to that through the end of the year with the state, and as I said, we'll see how it plays out.
Thank you. Anybody else? County Executive? George, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Friends, good to see you, and I'm sure I'll see you in person somewhere up and down the line, maybe one of these opening restaurants. That'd be nice.
Good night, George.
Thanks, George.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right. The next item on the agenda is communication to the board, and I see Mr. Tippett has his hand up. Hands up. His virtual hand up.
Glenn, turn on your mic. I am with you now. How are you?
Glenn.
A couple of things. I'm here, who's just here. Your actual number is for Westchester County, your sales tax was down 19% from last year. That was Westchester County alone, and that included, of course, the 1% increase. So that's the type of number that you're looking at. That was announced by New York State, Westchester County's sales tax revenue for May of this year was down 19% from last year. So I'm sure you're gonna have to do a number of number crunching on that. Talked about the police department. Read broadly, but you're gonna have to start with having the police department actually communicate with the community. Been saying this for years. I'm gonna say it at every single meeting. The police chief ought to be here giving quarterly reports. If you actually go on the Amaraic Police Department information, the last report they gave on crime statistics was 2016. During the Obama administration. That is ridiculous. There is no reason why we can't get information from our police department. The police chief ought to be here on a regular basis to ask questions. Do we integrate with our health center for people who do have mental problems in the village? Is there an outreach if you know that there is a home where you have a problem individual with the police and social services and our mental health center? Training. Do we give non-lethal lethal training to our police officers? As of right now? Do we train to decelerate situations? A lot of this might be doing done. What is our community outreach right now? What is our communication with the different sections of the village right now? And I'm sure there's people in the village who at times would like to ask a member of the police department in a public forum why certain policies are being done or a problem that they might have in the community. There's no reason faith to to keep from having problems is to be proactive, not to have to react after an incident happens. That's what we're looking to do. That's what Black Lives Matters is all about. That's what everybody's life matter is all about. You have to be proactive. That police community has to. That police community has to integrate your mental health center, social workers, community outreach, and it can't just be once a year, you show up at the local church, the local leaders all give a nice speech that nobody ever hears. It has to be here in a public format where the entire village progress is going on with our police department. Couple other quick ones. The fifty-foot setback law. You need to change that ASAP. You now have an incident where somebody was looking to do a reconstruction of their property, the part of the property being reconstructed was outside of the fifty-foot zone. Yet the zoning board isn't sure if the law encompasses this or not. They actually have the building inspector coming to explain why he said that it doesn't. The way they interpret it, you have two members that say yes, two members that say maybe, one member that says no. It can be interpreted two ways. Nobody on the planning board right now knows how to interpret the fifty-foot setback law the way it's written. The only thing they all agree on, it was a poorly written law and that you, the trustees and mayor, has to do something about it. And if the findings go wrong, you may just have another lawsuit on your hands. Has to be addressed immediately. You also have to address the multi dwellings law. You have two other projects that would be encumbered by it depending on how that is because I warned you when you passed all these laws that when you interact one law with the other, you wind up completely restricting and the way the multi-dwelling law looks, if it is interpreted a certain way, the other two projects that you have right now, the Old Honda property and the East Prospect property, both would not pass the multi-dwellings law. So you would have no construction going on in the village at all at this point. Because the interlocking laws prevent anybody from actually developing anything. So you, as a board, have to look at what you passed and figure out how to fix it because right now you are either having the building inspector say, yeah, it's all right, and the board's questioning it. Or the boards are going to say the inspector's wrong and the developers are probably going to sue the village. Address these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
No one else has their hand up?
Okay, no one else has their hand up.
We will go to the order of the bills. There are no public hearings tonight. Go to the order of bills. Pardon me. Resolution authorizing budget transfers to over budget account. Okay, we have this in front of us, the resolution, and they're really like it looks like three resolutions. There's money from contingent, snow removal and traffic violations to law services contract to cover Mr. Levantall's invoices. This is ninety-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then there's another transfer from safety inspection buildings of three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars to emergency tenant protection. And then the last is serial bond interest, serial bond of the waterfront interest, serial bond of the sewer fund interest and sanitary sewer contract services. We're transferring money to bond anticipation. Would you explain this one? Because I know you're the band man.
Yeah, absolutely. We project out what our bond anticipation note expenditures are going to be towards the next fiscal year. Some funds have, we've overestimated, some we underestimated, so we're balancing everything out. We were short three thousand nine eighty-four and we found excess money in sanitary sewer four twenty-one, where we take it from there. So this is a transfer before the board to balance out all of the actual expenditures that were made for serial bond expenditures.
Okay, this is just end of year housekeeping?
That's correct.
All right, with that information before us, does anybody want to make a motion?
Just one clarification. It's not just Levantall, but Abrams as well. So it's because it's it's ninety-three, total is ninety-three. It's bundling up all the legal bills.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ocasino. Trustees, Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFoe?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next is the abstract of the ordered vouchers to be. Okay, this is last year's, right?
That's correct.
So we are paying tonight bills and charges that were incurred in the last fiscal year. And that amount is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Questions or concerns? All right, Mr. Tippett has his hand up. My role?
Yes.
Yes. I was actually getting it's for both parts. I saw that forty thousand dollars was taken from contingency to for law. And I see we have ninety-eight thousand dollars worth of so worth of bills under this abstract. Where did we wind up with our legal costs for the year ending twenty twenty? Were we over budget? Were we on budget? Because it seems like we've had a lot of legal bills, especially in the last few months. Thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions about this abstract?
No, but we should answer that. It's clearly over budget, right? Because because of the transfer.
I did have a comment. And I've already cleared this with staff, which is bottom of page three. We have Keller Sessions, which is our engineers. What I asked them was the breakdown, which they the breakdown for the eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two, which I got in an email. I don't have it in top of my head, but everything was 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 clear. And I think it was, we also I also suggested that we break it down as we have it in the lower, in the in the in the top of the page with the legal bill. So you know if it's escrow, if it's general engineering, how much it costs. So I don't think it's necessary to to make any adjustments now, but I think it'll help us in the future to understand what engineering and this follows on on Jerry's approach to to have engineering scope projects. Give him an estimate and that's just run through them. I think he can. So that is a good way to just follow the process and then how to follow the bill. So I already clear my question, my my concern here, and I think they can do that in the future. That's all my comments.
Anybody on the board?
I agree.
Okay. Any motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Ocasino. Trustees, Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFoe?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, the next abstract for this year's bills this fiscal year, one million one hundred and forty thousand three hundred and four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Anybody on the board have any questions or concerns?
I just noticed we're refunding a lot of parking permits. Is that because people aren't commuting anymore?
Yeah.
Probably.
That's my understanding, but
Yeah.
Probably to point out that the bulk of this is a worker's comp is a million dollars.
Yep.
You know, when the COVID thing first hit, I was going for a walk one night and there was absolutely no cars in the parking lot at the train station. It's seven. And I watched the train come in. It was the strangest thing. Nobody got off. It was like, you know, a ghost town. Yeah. So I guess we're picking up.
So if someone buys an annual permit, let me just ask, if someone buys an annual parking permit and then they decide they don't want it, they can get a refund prorated?
Correct, yes.
That's correct.
If a person moves out of the community or, you know.
Yeah, or they just decide they don't want it anymore.
Yeah, they get laid off.
Do we have a I was under the impression we had a waiting list for these parking places?
Say it again.
Do we have a waiting list for these places?
Railroad.
Permits?
Railroad, we don't have a waiting list. There's a cap on railroad permits. Once we hit that cap, we create a waiting list. Is there currently a waiting list? Currently, no.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the data in here? Glenn has his hand up.
Yeah, I would ask the question. With the parking permits that we're giving out, how close are we to the cap? Are we are we significantly below the amount of permits that we actually gave out last year? That's another that's another financial matter that we have to manage.
Thank you. Okay. Your motion to accept? The bills?
So moved.
Okay then.
Okay, great. Ocasino. Trustees, Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFoe?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you.
The next item on the agenda. I get, you know, only problem with using a computer is sometimes you got to reboot it. The next item then is whole business resolution authorizing parking spot, the clothing drop-off container on Old White Plains. This is for Big Brother. Old White Plains Road adjacent to St. Vito's. Is that correct?
Yeah. Mayor, except we wouldn't be losing a parking spot. We're just we're putting the donation bin on a grassy portion of the end of that of that area.
Okay, so it won't affect all?
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, I think it's a much better location. Yeah, and thank you for adding the one week, once a week pickup provision.
Yeah.
Need a motion for the board?
Oh, move.
Second.
Ocasino, sir. Trustees, Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFoe?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Pardon me. Hi.
Okay, new business. Resolution authorizing approval of the Westchester joint waterworks filtration facility project. This is what we're approving tonight is the the ultraviolet UV treatment facility. This is one of the things that the United States EPA wants all surface water to be treated to get rid of crypto crypto sporidium. I knew I knew Mr. Stoneoff would know.
I didn't say it. It was me.
Okay.
I'm the water and sewer guy.
And it also will allow us to use less chlorine in the water, which will cut down on the chlorine. The chlorine problem from overchlorinating. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
I have a
Eighty thousand that we would bond as part of our bonding?
We could bond it or we could take it out of the water.
Yeah. With the way the resolution is prepared, the board would the option to fund it through either way.
I mean, do we have a sense of what we're going to do or is it just leaving our options open?
I think that that's how it's usually, I think we usually if you look historically, it gets bonded. But I think we prepared a resolution in this fashion.
And we don't have any choice. We have to do this, so.
Yeah, you have to do it, yeah. The EPA requires if we're, you know, this is Rye Lake, right? This isn't Shaft Twenty-two. We have two supplies, Rye Lake and Shaft Twenty-two. They want redundancy. So like, there's going to be a time in the future where Shaft Twenty-two gets taken out of service to be so that's moving in a hundred years. So then we're all going to be dependent upon Rye Lake. So it's something that is required by the
Mayor, is this one of the projects that was in the five-year capital plan, capital?
Yes.
That they came and presented to us earlier in the year?
Yeah. And it works hand in glove with the filtration plant.
I'm opening it now.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns about it?
My question is, I don't see it in the list. Is this something additional?
No, they talked about it.
The list has five things on it. It has the U Rye Lake UB filtration facility. That's an eight million. So this is not it.
Yes, it is. It's the
Oh, okay. No, 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 this is not it. This is the infrastructure modification, okay? Okay, now I get it. Now I understand. That was my problem, that in our presentation in the beginning of the year, it was tagged as seven hundred and fifty. Now it is, it is six fifty.
Six fifty.
And we have to pay twenty-seven percent, so it's one eighty. Okay, yeah, it makes sense. It was one of the it was the third, the second piece of that projects for twenty twenty. And I think we discussed that that will be bonded.
Yeah. Just so, just the twenty-seven point six nine percent. So people know that's based on communities' water usage. It's not based upon like a per capita. It's not based upon how many people are in a community. It's all based upon water usage in the community. Just, that's a point of clarification for people watching at home. Okay, I think we have a hand up from Mr. Tippett?
Yeah, is the if you bonded, is the bond paid from revenues generated through the water fund?
Yes.
And the second one is, I had mentioned it a while ago. Maybe you can have the budget committee look at it. I think we should also look about replacing whatever pipes we have to have left to be replaced in the town and do it as one large bond. When you have the interest rate this low, if you actually, I think you should have the budget committee do the numbers. You may find out that you're actually going to be saving money per year from year one if you actually just do the entire project and get it done.
Thank you.
Proactively.
Proactively. Thank you.
Thanks. Any motion?
So moved. Second.
Ocasino. Trustees, Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFoe?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next is resolution authorizing back pay owed to a village employee. Jerry, you want to explain this?
Mayor, during a routine year-end, starting of a new year cycle review, we come across an employee at the sanitation department that had not received his negotiated raise for several years. And so this would disauthorization allows us to pay him his back pay.
I'm totally insane paying this gentleman what we owe. But having been job steward for twenty-something years, I have guys call me when they're missing a dime at a check.
Mr. Gentile is a fantastic Mr. Gentile is a fantastic.
Murder. I can't believe this poor guy let it go to be twenty-two thousand dollars.
So we, we wanna, we wanna make good on his, um.
Anybody have any questions or concern?
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you caught it, 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 you know, drives home the point that we needed a human resources department for a long time in this village, so. Glad, and happy day for Mr. Gentile.
Yeah. We'll spend it all in one place.
Yeah.
So, we're taking twenty-two thousand from appropriate fund balance from this year, right, from twenty-one? Twenty, twenty-one, okay. Let, let's just keep, keep, uh, let's keep the tab, uh, current.
Absolutely.
Today is small, but, but as it goes, adds up, then, then we'll be, it'll be good, useful to, to review it when we get this, not, not, not at the, the day of the meeting, yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, I need a motion, hey, Mr. Gentile?
So moved.
I'll second. Augustino. Trustees, Winchester?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Okay, uh, Christie, hi Christie, uh, this is resolution regarding scheduling a public hearing, discontinuing a portion of, of East Old White Plains Road, a proposal to discontinue a portion of E, of East Old White Plains Road in order to establish the permitted parking lot. Uh, Christie, you wanna speak on this?
Um, sure, I, so this was an initiative through Jerry and Dan, um, to discontinue a small portion, it's the dead end portion of East Old White Plains Road, uh, to turn it into a permitted parking lot, and so I have helped them with the process to do so, which, um, part of it is that the Board of Trustees, trustees needs to hold a public hearing to discuss the proposed, uh, demapping, so this is the resolution to schedule that public hearing, um, I wanna note that Jerry and I did discuss a date, uh, we are hopeful that the board would, or at least I believe this is more Jerry is hopeful, that the board would like to hold the public hearing over Zoom, if the board decides not to do so, the hearing will have to be, the date of the hearing will have to be changed on the resolution to, um, likely September, October, when you'll be holding, uh, meetings in person, but I, I did wanna note that, and then also keep in mind that the resolution lists this as a type-two action, um, believe we put can, routine or continuing administration and management, uh, if we find out differently at the public hearing, that we think that it'll have a different environmental effect, we can, um, reassess seeker at that point, but as of right now, we feel that it's a type-two.
Okay, I just wanna, for the public, uh, you all know that Old White Plains Road, as you're going through the village, gets elevated to pass over, uh, I ninety-five, but if you look next to it, uh, I guess it used to, you know, before the, the freeway was there, it used to continue straight on a level plane, and now it ends at the freeway wall, uh, adjacent to, uh, where St. Vito's is, and it, it's just a dead end up against the wall. So that's the area we're talking about, we're not talking about taking Old White Plains Road itself out of commission, this is a little spur that was left over from the, uh, from the freeway, uh, project, back in whatever it was, the fifties. So, I'm fine, you know, will either, can the rest of the board follow that?
It, well, it, it would be parking that we would charge for.
It would be.
Would it be permit parking?
Permit, permit parking.
Cause it's used for church parking a lot, so how would that work?
We would exclude the Sunday, so there wouldn't be any.
And then, the other thing is, the governor has an extended executive order, so we could be meeting, we might, I, 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 yeah, I guess I'm hoping he'll do it, but if he doesn't, we can't have a Zoom meeting on July thirteenth.
So, we would be having a regular meeting.
Yeah.
We would be having a regular meeting.
Nora, Nora, this, this issue of Zoom meetings and the governor's extending the order came up in the county call this afternoon, and last time, the governor just, you know, extended it at the last minute, there's no one who anticipated that we're gonna start with a meeting?
No, no.
Even discussed that maybe, you know, could, could, could the county request that these deadlines go, you know, to September first, but they can't because his executive-only order can only be thirty days, so it's anticipated that it will be extended and that will be on Zoom, but that's where we are.
We just don't know.
Even though we had discussed, you know, not holding public meetings by Zoom early on in this, um, I, I think it would be good to get this started, there's no reason that we would have to, um, close the public hearing, July thirteenth, if there are people who want to weigh in and we feel like we, you know, they haven't had a chance, but as people have gotten used to this a little bit, um, I, I understand the argument that maybe it makes sense to hold, schedule a public hearing sooner rather than wait until things normalize, because I don't know when that's gonna happen.
One thing is, I think we should have to figure out a way of getting notifications to people in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
I think, you know, there may, that's the population of people who'd be most interested in it, so whether we can do some flyers or post the, post the kind of sign that we post, require applicants to post for land use boards, just publicize it.
That's a great idea, post it in the parking lot.
Yeah, we can put that up.
Yeah, I think that would make it.
Okay.
A better option.
All right, uh, anybody wanna make a motion on this?
So moved. Second.
Augustino, trustees, Winchester?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi, thank you, board, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Christie. Thanks, Christie.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing agreement for use of a boat slip by Save the. Uh, Save the Sound is located, their offices are here in the village of Merrick, they have historically had a slip, in Albrowell Park, uh, in, in Marina and Albrowell Parks, uh, where they, uh, go out into the sound and do research, and, uh, I think in, in the whole, this is a, of the, uh, benefit to the community to allow them to have a slip, but the only person, the only entity that can allow that is Board of Trustees, that's why it's before us tonight. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
This was on the work session, we didn't get to it.
It wasn't on the work session.
It was on the previous work session.
Work session, we talked about it.
Where governmental entities would be approved without going to the board, but other entities would have to come to the board, that was, was discussed.
But, but I mean, this was for the work session today.
It wasn't on the work session.
It was.
No.
Yeah, it was, yes. It was item two, D, no, two, two E.
Oh, sorry. Two E, that's.
Talk about it now?
We have a meeting, uh, we, I, I hate to delay, uh, I am, this is urgent, because we do have a meeting a week from today, because that, that's how, that's the procedure, I hate to say, because I.
Yeah, I, I know, it is.
I hate to be the one bracing it, but I, I also have to, you know, and I know, I actually see, uh, it could be, uh, I, I see also Mr. Linderoff on, on the, on the participants list, uh, as I just turn on this, so he's probably interested and he wants to get this resolved, but, you know, it's our, it's our, it's our, it's our, it's our, that's how we, it should be discussed in work session first, so it's just a week, we can, we can certainly deal with it, you know, one of the first item on, on Monday, and approve it, we're making an action, but let's follow our rules. That's my take, and I, I hate to say it, because it's, you know, I know they do, I, I know this is water sampling, I know how poor it is, especially now everybody wants to jump in the water and how, how vital the work is, but I, I, I also have to just, especially because I know, I know, I know them, uh.
Where is it on the work session?
It was item two, E, like Edward.
Water logging.
Two E.
I said, you know what, that, that's my mistake, I should've done it on a regular meeting, I, I honestly didn't see that, and I usually always do the regular meeting stuff. What? Mr., Peter, Peter has his hand up, let's, let's, let's give Peter a. Pete, unmute yourself.
Uh, yeah, I, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good, it's, uh, it's nice to digitally see you all doing well. So I, I just wanted to, uh, just hear what I said, so it sounds like we're in pretty good shape for this, although I know you would all like to discuss it at the work session. We have the boat slip, which you've all, the village of Merrick has graciously given us for the past three years, thank you for making this kind of an official item on this agenda. We also have a, a dissolved oxygen logger that goes out and sort of an unused portion of the dock. If I heard Victor correctly, um, trustee four, did you say that would be next Monday? That the slip would be discussed in more detail?
Of, uh, we have a meeting next week, because we, we, we couldn't, we, we didn't raise it, uh, today, I, I, I would agree to get it, get it, get it approved, uh, in the work session, uh, on, on, on Monday.
Okay, yeah, I cau- okay, thank you.
It's just one week, but just to follow our rules, I, that's why I say I hate to, to, to posit on you, but, uh, I, I, I know you very well, so I know, I, I, I think you'll, you'll, you'll know, you, you, you'll agree that we have to follow the rules.
Yes, yeah, no, of course, um, so for the slip, absolutely, you have to follow the rules, I, I completely agree, so for the slip, we also use an unused portion of the dock for a dissolved oxygen logger, um, that's not really boat-related, and I'm, if possible, uh, I'd like to start talking with Harbor Master Russo about that in advance of Monday, because we'd like to get it in in the month of June, if we're gonna go with the same location we've gone with for the past three years, um, if I can't get it in by then, I may need to move it, um, or I'll be out of compliance with our EPA quality assurance project plan. So, I don't know if that's okay, if we, if we need to vote on putting the logger in the water in an unused portion, um, if Jerry can just kinda say Harbor Master Russo, it's okay to set that up with Peter, or if that also needs to be discussed at the working session.
Yeah, I, I, I feel bad, because this was a mistake that I made, uh, and I, and I'm, I'm almost always good on, uh, making sure things run for a regular meeting. I mean, it, it, I, I, I would request that we, that we, uh, vote to suspend the rules on this one item, just to get him in the water, because it, it was, it was one of these things that was no fault of his own. So I mean, I, I mean, I, I would hope that we could, you know, I mean, this isn't like something that's controversial, and I don't hear, you know, there's, there's gonna be a lot of, pushback, so I, I'd rather, you know, with, I understand following the rules, I really do, and, uh, I wasn't trying to, uh, circumvent the rules, this was just an oversight on my department. So I, I would hope that at one time we could, uh, you know, give this gentleman a break and let him do the good work that helps the village.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, Mayor Murphy, and if that, if, if the board is okay with that, certainly, um, I would be as well, um, but if there was a way to just, let me start the discussions with, uh, Joe Russo on the logger specifically, um, which doesn't go on a boat slip, um, that would actually be really helpful, and I, I'm more than happy to wait a week on the boat slip, um, if you all would like to discuss that in the working session. Um, but, that being said, I'd be fine with getting them both worked through, um, that's of course on, on the boards.
I, I'd be willing to suspend the rules, because I think we did make a mistake, and this is something, you know, it's also a new process that we've been having, but my other question is, what has to happen with this extra boat at the end of the dock? Can Jerry answer that, is that another permission that needs to be required?
I don't think it's a boat, Nora, I think it's just a water logger, I think it's a, a piece of equipment, is that correct, Peter?
Yeah, that's right, so we do, we, we do, we would like to bring our boat in, and we've had a slip in the East Basin where we keep our little kinda secondary Boston Whaler, which really helps us out with staff time and reducing fuel costs, so we don't have to bring our bigger boat up from this, uh, city island. But the logger in itself i- is quite literally a logger that goes underwater, you don't see it.
Yeah.
And it's attached to a, it's basically attached to a cinder block, and it's got a barometric pressure logger topside, and it goes somewhere where there's not a boat, it's an unused portion of the dock completely. That is what I'd love to move forward with this week, because it takes some time to work with, uh, Joe, and, uh, just, I don't wanna rush it, but I also need to get it in by June if we're gonna go with that same spot, and June, of course, is coming to a close.
Jerry, is that something that the board has to approve, or is that something that you can approve?
I can.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be anything related to, um, allowing, um, Save the Sound to put a logger in, it would just be an agreement that we would, um, know where it's going and how long it's gonna go for, those kinds of things.
There's no feet away.
Yeah, it's the boat slip that, that the, the board should authorize to, to provide, Save the Sound and other, you know, entities, non-governmental entities.
They need some, some approval from us to use our property, why don't we, why, why don't we split the baby? Why, why don't we, um, I know that's not, doesn't sound good, I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize, uh, let, let's, uh, let's, let's approve the boat slip, or let's consider the boat slip, uh, because, and I just had a question, is that yearly or is it into the future?
Year.
Is it yearly, every year, or do we, is it now, or are we doing it just for entity, Jerry?
You can, you can do a term, but, uh, you can do a term of more than one year, but typically these things are yearly.
This is yearly, okay, so this is, so the boat is one year, and why don't you discuss the other issue with, with your harbor master? It's, it is, you know, he's very sensitive about his deck, his, his, his docks, and, and, and if it's, if it's just your purview, uh, the village manager will approve it, if it needs to come to us, it could be as, as, as quick as next week. So we're being expeditious, I, I would be agree, I agree, I would be okay with that.
Okay, so there's.
Sorry for my expression.
Well, well, the resolution, that's not splitting the baby, the resolution is just about the slip, anyway, so, I think that we would just suspend the rules and then vote on the slip.
All right, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and to approve the resolution, and I apologize, this is totally my fault.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Winchester?
This is to suspend the rules only.
And, I, is it, is it suspended resolution? I, I, I use both at the same time.
Okay, can, can I ask the applicant then a question?
Let me amend this, let me amend this.
Thanks.
I make a motion to suspend the rules, uh, having to do with items being on the work session before they're voted upon.
Second.
Oh, okay, Augustino. Trustees, Winchester?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Now I make a motion that we approve the provision of the agreement, uh, for the use of a boat slip and folks at Save the Sound for a year.
I have a, I have a question, actually, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna, I, I have a question for the work session, if we had addressed it, I just have, I would like to know, to Save the Sound have other boats, are they kept in Connecticut? I mean, do they get free slips from other municipalities or from marinas, or are we the only one giving a free slip? I would just like a little background.
Sure, yeah, of course, um, we have multiple boats, uh, we, we do have a, a slip in, uh, Bridgeport that Soundkeeper Lucy maintains, that's given to us free of charge, um, we've had slips in, uh, parts of Queens that have been given to us free of charge, so it's certainly not out of the, um, out of the norm. We're working in City Island, and, and soon I'm sure we'll have a slip there free of charge, usually we get to know the municipality, the people working in it, and they, they appreciate what we do, um, as the village of Merrick, I mean, as you all expressed, and the residents do to us as well, and it really helps us as a nonprofit, um, to, you know, redirect funds that would be spent there to, uh, help sustain other efforts.
So, Mayor, can I just jump in here to clarify something?
Sure.
Because the, the village can't give away private prop, give away something to a not-for-profit, okay? So that's why there has to be an agreement.
Yeah.
But, but the agreement can be simply, the village allows Save the Sound to, boat, dockets boat in this slip, and Save the Sound agrees to share the information that develops with the village.
I, I think that that's in a resolution, Bob.
Yeah, and that's sufficient, I just wanted to make the record clear that you're not giving anything away for nothing, which would be improper.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I made the motion.
Second.
Augustino, trustees, Winchester?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi, and, uh, Peter, I'm sorry about the confusion.
No, no, that's all right, Mayor Murphy, I really appreciate you all, um, acting on it today as well, so, um, Jerry, maybe I'll follow up with you and Joe, and, uh, we could just move things forward, it sounds like the logger, being that it's not at a slip, is something that we can also just move forward as well.
Peter, just follow up with me, and then I'll, uh, I'll explain the situation.
To, to Joe?
Yeah, no, I'll explain the situation down at the harbor, just follow me tomorrow or the next day will be fine.
Okay, will do, thanks a lot, all right, have a nice evening, everyone, thank you very much.
Bye, Peter, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you, that, that concludes our new business communication to the board round two. Okay, thank you, that concludes our new business communication to the board round two. Of course, Glenn. Advail yourself.
A couple of things, we're talking about boating. Why do seniors get a 15% discount on the boating, and it's not means tested? And we're talking about, we live in a community where we have haves and we have have-nots, and it seems to me, we have for community, for residents, we have a voting rate for non-residents, and then we have an extra 15% for senior residents. And why isn't that means tested? Because why would we give 15% to somebody who's a millionaire?
Well, I think that happens in a lot of senior citizen situations.
I know, but it doesn't make it right, especially when you're talking about this age, the climate you're looking at of the haves and have-nots. It says, there's no problem with programs, but you have to be aware that having programs that 50% of the village can't take advantage of, because they're not in that position, isn't fair either.
It's a valid point.
Something to think outside of the box on.
Thank you.
The tree law I was looking at, can we add a line where the village manager or person a person assigned by village manager can do tree inspections? If there is a problem with a tree, because I think having the village manager look at trees in this community is a complete waste of time. I think that he could very easily appoint somebody to represent the village in order to see the condition of trees. Is there any provision for when we have a sanding incident, and we have trees down all over the community? How do you enforce the I kill the tree law? Are we going to have, is there any provision at all? You know, we have like this provision, if you put nails in the tree, if you take the bark, if you do this, now. How is that even enforceable? I mean, are we going to have tree autopsies, and who pays for the tree autopsy? And then you have three trees over five years, again, how is that enforceable? I cut down a tree this year, I cut down a tree in two years. Then I cut down a tree in another 18 months, so I cut down three trees in four and a half years. How is that enforceable? Who's going to know my cut? I think the law should look at clear cutting, that's what you're trying to prevent. You, there's no way to enforce, there's no way to enforce if I kill a tree. We're not going to have Quincy coming in and do tree autopsies. And who would, you know, who's going to sit there and say, oh, you took down one tree in 1997, one tree in 1999, one tree in the year 2000, so you're within 48 months of the five years. Make the law simpler, that the law is, I mean, I read it, it's so long, so convoluted, that there's nobody, nobody's going to understand it in the village to start with. Go to more town of Amerenek, clear cut, if you're looking at remove this many trees on a project, you have to go before the board, or we want the tree committee, whoever you want, and speak to them about tree removal. But when you start to get into the nuances of three trees in five years, if you're going to kill a tree, there, you can't pass stuff that's completely in enforceable. I don't know how you would enforce if somebody wanted to kill a tree on their property. I really don't. So, something to think about, and I still love you guys, I'm mad at you for the five-minute rule, but I still love you.
That's right.
Keep working hard, have a good night.
Thank you, I just want to
Thank you, Glenn.
The Declaration of the Gettysburg Address was 272 words, it took two and a half minutes to say, and it explained why there was a civil war, what had happened in the civil war, what would have been the progress of the civil war, and how we would end up in peace. So I just want to say, I use that as an exemplar of how you can say things with brevity and precision. I've always wanted to say that, thank you. And by the way, Mr. Capola, right?
Yes.
Jason wants to say something, Jason, are you on? Unmute your mic, Jason. Jason, unmute your mic. Jason from MEMS, you have your hand up?
About, how about now, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Jason, before you begin, can I just say, I apologize for not getting to you. I know you were on before, and at the work session, that's going to be next Monday, I would be happy to do MEMS first to get it out of the way, because you waited patiently. I don't want to keep you from talking, but I just want to get that out there.
All right, no worries, understood, thank you, I was just kind of hoping we can go tonight, I'm not available next Monday. My whole thing should take maybe one minute.
Well, yeah, say what you need, Jason.
Well, I'm here at the request of the board, so I was hoping maybe you guys had questions for me regarding the patio project?
I don't think we're prepared for that right now, Jason. Don't, you can't come Monday?
No, I can't, I'm sorry, I freed up tonight, specifically for this.
Does anybody have any
What I would suggest is that we suspend the rules again, because if he was waiting and we didn't see him, like, we would have taken him. So that was, this is one of the, you know, pitfalls of Zoom, you don't see people in the audience, so
I second suspending rules.
What?
I would agree with you to suspend the rules.
So the question is, can everybody go back to their work session?
Can I have a vote on suspending rules?
What?
Let's vote on suspending rules. I second it. Ogie Corroll. Trustee Winship.
You know, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote out of an abundance of caution, overabundance of caution.
Trustee Hatches.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee Tifer.
Yes, let's discuss it, but I have to, I haven't, I would have, I would need a few minutes to go and pick up the packet, I don't have I mean, actually, that's why I think it's I already took this out.
Jason, why would we do this, Jason? Why don't you just tell us what you wanted to tell us?
Sure, absolutely, thank you, I just wanted to give you
I'm going to, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt, I'm going to mute myself and stop the video of myself, so that I'm not participating at all.
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, I just wanted to give you a brief update on our status of the EMS, before we just talk about the patio request, I'll try to be about a minute or so. Over the past couple of months, we've responded to over 17, I'm sorry, over the last year, we responded to 1,700 calls for assistance. These last couple of months, our 65 volunteers have responded to several hundred calls for COVID-19. Several of our volunteers have become ill, some of them have been hospitalized, but we are continuing to provide service to the village. We are spiking out a new ambulance to replace our old one. For those of you that are not aware, as an agency, we provide all our own vehicles through no cost to the village, the town, or the taxpayers. We do all fundraising in-house and provide our own apparatus. The reason I'm here tonight, I was working with Jerry, we have a $10,000 building repair that we have been encumbering to fix our patio. We spent no money in fiscal year 2018, we spent no money in fiscal year 2019, and we are looking to repair the patio, which was heavily destroyed when our generator was installed, I believe in 2016. We've provided the three quotes to Jerry, the lowest one comes in at $18,190. That's $1,800 under our $10,000 a year. We're looking for the support of the board and approval to get this project started.
Okay. All right, you know, we, it's not on the agenda to approve tonight. We can, you've made your piece, and we will take it up at the work session on Monday, but we know how you feel about it, and you've had a chance to introduce it to us.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it, and thank you, board trustees.
And Jason, thank you, and your whole crew for everything you do, I know this must have been a horrible time for you folks. And we appreciate it, and we couldn't have done it without you and the gang, so thank everybody for us.
Absolutely, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. There was another gentleman with his hand up. Luis, unmute yourself. Mr. Queros.
Can I unmute my name? Sort of confusing listening to when I could talk and not talk, because like you said, we're not in front of you, so we can't see our hands up like it used to be. A comment, Mr. Mayor, just a little side comment on the Gettysburg Address. It might have lasted two and a half minutes, the shortest speech ever, but the civil war is still on, and some of us would resent to those two and a half minutes that hasn't shut down the purpose of the civil war. As it relates to what I called for, in regard to the Goldstein matter, I am requesting that you put a statement out as to when you learned in 2019 that Cindy was under investigation, and why you waited six months to call public hearing when transparency is so important. It seems very suspect to me that you waited until a few days after the Hampshire boat to call the hearing. The hearing should have been last December. Again, I'm going back to transparency, please show more transparency, put a statement out as to your action. We need, we need that kind of government.
Okay. Thank you. Dara, sir?
Yeah, Daria.
Okay, this will be about soon, go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's Daria, so I wanted to ask, like, to follow up with the previous, I guess, questionnaire, and I wanted to ask the mayor about when he first learned that Cindy, that Cindy Goldstein was under ethics investigation, because we know that the Ethics Board ruled in November, but I imagine I'm not the only person who wants to know when you first learned of it, such as the previous speaker. Because I feel like the timeline cannot be totally explained by the COVID crisis, so I'd like
This is a matter that's currently in litigation, so I'm not going to comment upon that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Report to the village manager.
Mayor, all I have is a couple of items for the record. One of them is the planning services contract with AKRF to fill in the gap between when Mr. Kertler left and when our new planner comes in, as well as the executed order on consent, which I just realized only has my signature on this copy, but we have both signatures, myself and the individuals from the D C. So I'll make sure that that's corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ogie.
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder, our first half tax payment is due for the month of June.
Okay, and the folks who are getting a water bill, you will see that there's a reminder to participate in the census. So please fill out your census forms. Mr. Village Attorney.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
All right. Tonight, we have minutes of board trustees' special meeting of May 18th, and a work session, irregular meetings of May 26th, and a public hearing May 27th to report. Just to remind everybody, tomorrow, this community in Westchester County in Mid Hudson Reason will be entering Phase Three reopening. What that means is that indoor dining can resume at 50% capacity with tables at least six feet apart. So hopefully, our restaurants will get back into the swing of things. Personal care facilities are also reopening at 50% capacity with proper social distancing. That's, personal care includes massage therapies, spas, cosmetology, nail specialty, UV and non-UV tanning facilities, and the ever-popular tattoo parlors. I just want to make everybody aware of that, hopefully, we're opening up little by little, but that doesn't mean that we should relax and stop being proactive when it comes to COVID. Please wash your hands often, please maintain social distancing, and people who aren't in your social group, please wear a mask whenever you cannot maintain social distancing, and please just use common sense. That's it for tonight, and the next meeting is, we will have a special meeting next week on the 29th. And then we have a meeting on July 13th. So please enjoy your summer and be careful. Need a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Perfect.
Go on, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good, everybody.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.